Okay, welcome to our Troy Planning Commission meeting for May 10, 2017. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mayor?
President.
Mr. Wolke? Mr. Tederington?
Here.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mr. McGary? Mr. Force? We have a forum.
Okay, we have a forum. First matter is the minutes of our April 26 meeting. They have been previously disseminated. Are there any additions, corrections, or additions in those minutes? Vote for approval.
Second.
Is there a motion and support for the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They stand accepted. Okay, next we have Historic History Application for Installation of Exterior Insulation and Finish System on property located at 101 South Marcus Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do. The property owners are Robert and Heather Davie, and Ms. Davie is here in the audience today. They are proposing, well first of all, they OHI Forum describes this building as a two-story brick commercial building with wire cut brick on the facade and some decorative brickwork on the piers, which is present on the north and west elevations. Applicant is proposing to install what's called an IFFAS system on the facade of the building, which is depicted in the rendering provided by the applicant, and that is laying right up there for a larger picture. After we had some discussion amongst staff, the decision was made to contact Patrick Hansford, who is an architect. I'll read my, the comments that I have out of his report. He states that the building is a fine example of early 20th century industrial commercial construction. He goes on to state, "The proposed IFFAS cornice and pointings at the corners are not in keeping with the architectural style of the building. The faux cornice and arched parapet are not in keeping with the buildings of this era and this style. The faux cornice would conceal the corbelled brick accents and the third soldier course, thus affecting the architectural simplicity of the original design. The applied grandiose points at the corn, corners of the building are also out of character and scale for this style of architecture. The proposed design is what one would expect to see, an inexpensive commercial development during the mid to late 1980s, not in a downtown historic district. Since the very nature of IFFAS is to provide added thermal insulation to a building, this application of IFFAS does not add an energy efficiency to the building. In the end, the proposed design detracts and would be detrimental to the original architecture of the building and the surrounding context." I would like to stress that in the proposal that we have today, that the south wall of the building is an entirely different brick than the brick on the north and west side of the building. And I contacted Ms. Davie through email and asked what the plans would be for the south wall. She said, "Other than the tuck pointing that has been completed on the building, because it's an entirely different brick color, that there were no plans to do any further alterations to the south building," or, I'm sorry, south wall. One other concern that Mr. Hansford mentioned and that staff looked at was the concern that with the proposed IFFAS installation, this system will cover the decorative brickwork that is mentioned as a defining feature on the OHI Forum. Staff recommends denial of the proposed project based on the architect's report as follows: "The proposed project will be detrimental to the original architecture of the building and the surrounding context as stated in the architect's report. The proposed project would not keep with the architectural style and era of the building as outlined in the architect's report. The proposed project would conceal the corbelled brick accents and the third soldier course, thus affecting the architectural simplicity of the original design." I do want to mention that Ms. Davie did bring in a revised plan for consideration, however, staff has not had a chance to really look at the design and come up with a revised report. So as far as a revised proposal is concerned, I would ask that the revision be tabled until staff has the chance to write a report on that revision.
Ms. Davie?
Yeah, can I speak? Yes, please.
Just your name and address to start.
Oh, Heather Davie, and my, my home address?
Yes, please.
1640 Surrey Road, Troy, Ohio.
Now, you heard the staff report?
Yes.
Negative recommendation.
Yes.
I also understand that you did something to amend the proposal.
Yes.
Is it your intention then to go ahead and have us take action on this proposal? Or have us take action on what I hope that?
Well, since I've been told that we can't take action on the revised proposal, and I really need to get something done with this building, I would, I, I still prefer the proposal that I have in front of you today. We revised the proposal in order to meet the specifications that, that Patrick Hansford, Hansforth has, had, had written up in his letter. But I, there were a couple of things I wanted to say about that. One is, he mentions the fact in here that, that this looks like an inexpensive commercial development, mid to late 80s, and not in historic downtown, which, he's referring to the IFFAS and, and things like that. I have to admit, I take a lot of resentment to that, and I actually, we went around downtown and took pictures of buildings that have IFFAS on them, on down, in downtown Troy, two of which are city properties. And so, and the IFFAS is not, he also talks about the fact the application of IFFAS is for energy efficiency. Well, in each one of these pictures, and I don't know, can I, can I pass these to you? In each one of these pictures, you can see where the IFFAS is, and IFFAS is not used for energy efficiency in any of those buildings as well. It is just used for decorative. Two of the city buildings is the Troy Police Department and this city building where we're at, the, there's IFFAS on the top panel where the two connectors, that green section is, the two connector of the building is, that's IFFAS up there. And there's IFFAS on multiple other downtown buildings. So for, for it to be stated that IFFAS is not something that we put in historic downtown is obviously not something that is represented well with, with our downtown, I think when it's done correctly. The building that I'm speaking about used to have stucco on it. My dad bought it in the early 80s. It had stucco between the two windows. You can see that that has been replaced with the IFFAS because stucco is not a substance that really holds up in this climate area. So the building itself already has IFFAS on it. So what we're doing is, is we're asking if we can take off part of the parapet wall, which we're having problems with. The parapet wall is, is leaning and, and has, is, is not structurally sound at this point, I would say.
Heather, you're talking about the parapet wall? Are you talking about this piece up here?
I'm talking about that all the way across the top. Yes.
Across the top.
Mm-hmm. The, the part in the, the center section is just a taller parapet wall.
Okay.
The, the sides are also the parapet wall. The roofing of the building comes up over the parapet wall. And so what we imagine has happened over years is that roofing is pulling on that parapet wall. It's an old building, and the, and the brick is starting to lean.
So you would suggest you take, be able to take that off, and then you're going to build it back up?
We're going to rebuild it back up. And the reason why we're looking at IFFAS instead of brick is because the cost, we did originally want to just do the repair and just brick. That was what our thought was, and not, we wouldn't have to come to this at all because we'd just take it down, repair it, and put it back up. But, but the cost associated with that is very cost prohibitive. It is very expensive to have that done, and I wanted to note that it's my understanding that in the past, that is something that the planning commission should at least consider. In fact, even the building we're in right now used to have a third floor. They decided that it was cost prohibitive to keep that third floor. They took it off and made it a two-story building. So I'm asking for a change based on the fact that it's cost prohibitive to keep that brick.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Chair, can I, am I ready for comments?
Well, yeah, I was going to ask a question, but you go first.
No, if you have a question, I'd rather hear her answer than...
Okay. If you don't mind answering a few questions, please. Apparently the architect made some real pointed comments about covering up the coined corners and center pillar.
Well, and what is, what they're...
First of all, I wonder what those are. Do you have any idea what those are?
Yes. If you look at the drawing, the larger drawing?
Okay.
Okay? What he's talking about is, is the, what we were recommending to change to the building and, and putting the coined cornices on the sides and on the, and then the, there were pillars going down beside the doors.
Okay.
We were just trying to kind of tie it all in together. Instead of just replacing just the parapet wall, we were kind of trying to tie in the stucco between the two windows and the parapet wall within making it kind of look like all one uniform building in the sense. But that's where we thought if, basically what we were trying to come up with was a compromise. We need, we need to repair the parapet wall in this building, and it's quite essential it be done soon. I've got water intrusion that's based on the parapet wall. But in order for me, i- if it is such a case where you feel as though the design that we came up with was just so not in keeping, which is what Patrick is saying, I don't know that I would agree with that, but that is what he's saying, then we are willing to take off some of those additional features that we really are just an added expense for us anyhow. I mean, we...
Those features that would cover up the coined corners?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the coined, yeah.
The coined corners in the column. Okay.
The part that we have to fix is the parapet wall. That's, that's what we're needing. If the extra things are, are not in keeping or not desirable, that, that, I mean, we can cut that off and save money.
Okay. Hold yourself. Do we have any questions of the applicant?
Hold yourself.
Hold your position.
Okay.
Do you, do you have any, anybody have any questions of the applicant while she's still standing here?
It's not, no. I don't have more comments. Appreciate it. She may, she may have a response.
Okay, are there any questions of staff concerning the applicant?
When, I do have a question. When was this done?
My dad bought the...
I've been around...
What's that?
He bought the building in the early 80s.
Eighty-six?
And I, that was there when he bought the building. It was just that it was in stucco, in stucco and not IFFAS.
Right.
When he bought it, the stucco was peeling. He redid it in IFFAS at that time. We just, about a, two years ago, had it touched up also.
And this was approved then by?
Well, I imagine so.
Yeah, it was approved by Planning Commission and the VAR back in July in 1986.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of either the applicant or the staff? Thank you, Ms. Davie.
Maybe come a question, so you might want to just stay there, but I, I would like to see what the, the other one is. I, I understand all of this. Not sure if, if I agree 100% with Mr. Hansford. He is a, you know, he's got a, a very good reputation. He has a very good understanding of historic value as compared to the, you know, the historical record. So, you know, I don't take his, his advice with a grain of salt, but I'd certainly like to see what the, what another option might be, especially if it might save you money in, in the meantime.
And keep in mind, that's not what I want you to do. I just...
No, I, no, but I, I'm sensitive to that. I would, I would like to, and I'm not going to make a motion yet because I don't want to cut down the discussion, but my preference would be to, to table it assuming that we can have a discussion in two weeks, so it's not delayed for a long time. The, the one concern that I do have, and I'd like to see as part of more discussion about this in two weeks, is at a minimum, is, is there something minimally that we can do or you can do to the south wall, not necessarily with IFFAS or anything elaborate, to dress that up or at least make the brick consistent? Because you've done some tuck pointing, so there's, you know, some lighter brick, and then there's some little darker brick, and yes, all of it is not as brown as the front and the, the north elevation, but certainly because that's one of our gateway buildings into the downtown, coming from the, from the south, that's the first elevation that you see of that building. And I would hate to detract from any improvements that you make to the, to the west or the northern elevation because the southern elevation hasn't been touched at all. So I don't know if that's a discussion you can have with your contractor to see if it's a, some kind of an acid wash or some kind of cleaning that can be done. I don't know. I'm just guessing and...
I can give you a little bit of history there as to why that brick is so different. There used to be another building right beside that, so it was built with a different type of brick. So I'm not really sure whether there would be anything we could do or not. It actually is a different brick that is there.
And I'm not suggesting that there's a way other than probably painting it, maybe even detracting more, that, that, that the southern elevation can match the color and consistency of the other elevations. It's really, in my mind, just a matter of when you see that wall, you see several different, you know, you see, I don't know if you'd call it blotchiness, or it's just not consistent. So I don't know if it can be cleaned so that it all at least looks the same in one neat, clean wall. I don't, I don't know. And so I'd like that, if, if that can be explored while we're looking at the option two, that would be my preference.
I just want to make a comment about your comment, if you don't mind. The south wall isn't the best looking wall. Okay? I think the front of the, the side of the building really stands out. I agree with Mr. Tederington's indication that it's a kind of a gateway building, and it'd be really great if that same look wrapped around to the other side. However, this building's been in existence for quite some time, but the wall hasn't changed. I don't think you've changed the color of the building on that side, and I don't think the south wall's relevant to the presentation that we're being asked to consider today, the application. To have them make a presentation concerning something on the south wall as a condition to us either approving or disapproving the current application or the amended application, I think is irrelevant. However, that being said, if you want to do it with the savings that you might be proposing, that would probably be a great...
And again, I'm not, just to clarify, I'm not suggesting that instead of doing IFFAS on the pair, the, the columns, instead spend that money on doing some elaborate changes to the south, south elevation. I'm just asking, is there a way to maybe clean that up? And if it's, if it's a tan wall as opposed to the brown wall, then at least it's one color or consistency without going overboard. And, and I guess with all due respect, I, I think that we're looking at external, exterior changes to a structure and the architectural features, so I, I think the southern elevation is open for discussion, even if they don't present it as part of their application.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
I'll just weigh in. You know, I'm looking at, I think this, this is a good look. I have no trouble with, with the way you're trying to design it. I do have to agree with Patrick on the south side just looks blotchy. I mean, it detracts from what you're doing. In my estimation, I like what I'm hearing and seeing, I just wonder if there's anything can be done on that, because that's the, as people come down the road, heading, heading north, that's what they see. And I'm just trying to help make it so it's really aesthetically wrap around a good look. I think that would enhance the structure, not detract from the structure. And I did go over and look at it, and it does look a little splotchy on that side, but I'm trying to visualize what you're proposing, and be honest with you, you know, I don't have any troubles. But, but I would like you, Heather, to just see what can be done with all the cost savings to try to get some uniformity maybe on that south wall.
I will say that we just, I mean, we literally just had that, that brick all tuck pointed, and it, through that process, they cleaned it all and tuck pointed and put in brick, fixed the brick where it was broken and things like that. I can't imagine, other than putting out more brick, which would be incredibly expensive for just aesthetics, or painting, which I don't really know that that is going to be necessarily better option. I don't know that there'd be anything. I mean, I think we could look into it, but...
I'm just thinking the beauty of the building and how you enhance the building.
I understand.
Without putting a lot of money in brick, I'm not thinking that either.
I would agree. It has a very different look to it, and I would agree.
That's my...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any other thinking? This is, the commission won't take any actions.
So I'll make a motion to table.
There's a motion to table, is there support for that motion?
Second.
There's a motion in second to table matters. No discussion, please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Well, the motion, it takes four...
So it remains on the table.
Yeah.
So you take action?
We need to take action, some sort of action.
And are we looking at, which one are we looking at?
Well, this is the proposal right here.
Yes, that's it.
The application is that obligation.
With no changes.
She has indicated that she would agree to amend her proposal, taking out the coverings off of the coined corners and the center pillar.
If you look at the corners, you see how they're kind of like alternating?
Right.
We have a copy of the amendment.
I'd still like to, I mean, the staff has requested to table this so they can look at it and make sure they give us an informed decision, and if, in, in the interim, it's not delaying the tabling by more than two weeks to, you know, if Ms. Davie said that she would explore, if there are any options, and, you know, if, if the answer is no, they can't do anything on the, on the south side, then, then so be it. But at least by tabling it for two weeks, it gave staff the, the ability to really look at it and make sure they understood what is being proposed, because you're seeing a black and white rendering versus the full color one, and it may not be fair to staff to put, put this in front of us without being able to make a recommendation as to the alternative.
Does staff understand when she says that she would not cover the coined corners and the center pillar? Do you understand the extent to which she would be offering the amendment?
Yes.
I would make a motion to accept the application as amended with the coined corners and the center pillars not covered.
And just to clarify then, with nothing to be done on the south side or, or looked at or explored?
Correct. That exploration can still be done, and in a neighborly fashion, but it's not before us today on this application.
So everybody's understanding that we're talking about with the proposal with the taking out of the, I call pillars, but they're not really. You know what I'm talking about? Okay. I will, really still would like you to, with your, with any cost savings, to see if there's anything that can do to enhance that south side, only because I think it adds to your value of what you're trying to accomplish.
So, if you have any... I made a motion to approve the application. There's no support yet.
I'll support it.
There's a motion in second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, see, we're, what we're seeing with this proposal here as the alternative takes, it not only takes off the IFFAS on the pillars, the columns, but it's no longer going to have an arched pillar at the top. It'll just be the rectangular pillar. So it's different...
Which was Patrick's suggestion?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. Which was Patrick's suggestion? He did not like that arched look at the top of it.
So it's deliberate.
We were, we were trying to match what his recommendations were about keeping the building looking more similar to what it is right now, and that will fix your problem.
Heather, would you push, please?
Yes.
Heather, come over here, please. The, the amendment that you proposed, the, the not covering the corners, what are you talking about?
Getting rid of all those here, getting rid of all of this here, and then making this flat across the top.
Which is what Patrick was suggesting.
He was, I, I kind of like it myself, quite frankly. My dad designed it.
Okay, so, so then it goes back to my point. So we, we go back for two weeks and kind of tweak this, and then come back and discuss it in full. And then we're looking at all three sides of it, and, and again, I'm not suggesting that they put full IFFAS on the, on the, the south, or any IFFAS for that matter. Just want to see, is there any way to make that side uniform?
But I think I'm hearing you say you'll look...
Be it some kind of wash or something else.
I will, I will look into that regardless.
And in the meantime, the staff can point out what the differences are between A and B, so that we can make an informed decision on all of, all of this.
I was, you know, I, I obviously, I would prefer a decision sooner rather than later. I will respect whatever decision you come to with, but I am hoping to get this all started right after Strawberry Festival, and would need to have an answer sooner rather than later to go ahead and start that, so...
You have water infiltration problems.
We do. We have water coming into the second floor in that business up there, which is currently occupied space.
I see that the applicant has told us what the amendment's going to be and showed us on the graphic, and I don't see any reason to delay the decision. And, yes, we're still in discussion stage now.
Yes, we are, because it takes all, a unanimous vote...
That's absolutely correct.
...to approve this, and...
Well, let me ask you, Shannon, well, well, delaying, I'll get it out, delaying this to the next, will, will that still allow her, she's looking, Heather's looking at implement in this, after the festival? Do you see a negative on that, on not being able to do that after the festival? If there was a two-week delay so we make sure everything, we have an understanding, and maybe Heather can massage things a little bit?
My only response, I guess, to that would be is I don't know the schedule of her contractor, so I, I'm not able to really give you an intelligent answer on that without having...
I don't see a problem.
Checking with the contractor.
Let me, let me ask it a different way then, Mr. Chair. There's nothing that you guys see that would delay any kind of analysis and amended report within two weeks?
No.
Prior to the next planning commission?
That's correct.
So there's nothing that would, and, and in terms of delaying with building permits or anything like that?
Well, I, I would have to go, I still have to go to the building department and get building permits, so that would be a delay in and of itself.
Correct.
Their turnaround's pretty quick, though.
This is taking, this is kind of applying... Okay, any other discussion? There's a motion on the floor. Please call the roll.
What was the motion?
The motion was to accept the application as amended, to take off the, to make sure that the coined corners and the center pillar are not covered. Okay? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tederington?
Of course. I just think it's bad. With the neighborly understanding that something will continue to be looked at the southern elevation, I'll say yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
the southern elevation, I'll say yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhane?
Yes.
The motion is adopted.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Shannon, make sure you continue that discussion concerning that southern wall.
All right. Next matter to come before the commission is the historic district application for the exterior painting of 104 North Market Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do. The owner is Dask Investments LLC, and the applicant is David Murray, who is part of Dask Investments LLC. The applicant is requesting approval from the planning commission for exterior painting to the building. The OHI form describes this property as a high Victorian Italian age with a central doorway with semi-circular transom and double doors with arc glass. The applicant has submitted a paint scheme, which I have there in front of you. Those are the actual colors, and then you'll see the rendition of not this particular building, but a building with those colors on it, to give you an idea of what it will look like. The main color of the building will be SW 6192 Coastal Plain. The larger actions will be SW 6264 Midnight, and the trim will be SW 7566 West Highland White. Staff recommends approval of the proposed exterior alterations based on the following: The paint colors selected are keeping with the style and architecture of the building. The building is in need of sprucing up, which this project will provide.
Great. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Titerington?
So the similar house picture that we see, it looks like there's a couple of different shades of green on here, but that's not going to be the case, it's all going to be the one area.
Yeah, it's just that the main, largest portion of the building will be the coastal plain.
And the midnight will be things like the stairs, or the...
Right, like you see the larger trim at the top around the porch area.
Right. So anywhere, anywhere that is yellow is going to be the white, except for above the porch with the, where the pillars are, that's going to be the midnight?
That is my opinion.
And the applicant is here, if anybody wants a clarification.
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Second.
Motion's second, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mayhane?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titerington?
Yes.
The motion is adopted.
Next matter to come before the commission, the historic district application for demolition of structure at 25 North Oxford Street. Before staff's report, it shows on the agenda that I am the owner. I am not. Improved Troy Limited is one of the liability companies that I had originated. I am the statutory agent, I am not the owner. I am not any, I do not have any equity in the property or the entity itself. That being said, I advise them to pass on certain things, but not on this matter. Improved Troy Limited was created four, five years ago. That being said, staff, your report, please.
The applicant, Steve Burns, comes before the planning commission requesting approval for the demolition of the residence located at 25 North Oxford. There is no OHI form for this property, so I did some research over at the local history library. The resident, the residence of this property was constructed in 1898. When constructed, the residence was attached by an indoor stairway to the building located at what is now 21 North Oxford Street. 21 North Oxford Street was the site of the first city hospital in Troy. Marina Northcutt, maid to the hospital, and her husband used 25 North Oxford Street as a residence. Mrs. Northcutt and her assistants were able to move freely between the residence and the hospital when needed. The applicant is proposing to demolish the structure at 25 North Oxford. The property has been vacant since at least November of 2004, per the city water records. When you look at this property, it's obvious that the property is in disrepair and has been for several years. Per the zoning code, section 1143, 22 F-10, there are certain standards that you have to meet for demolition to take place in the historic district. The applicant has to give clear evidence that two or more of the following conditions exist. There are four listed in the code, and this particular property meets two. The structure is listed as non-qualifying or is not consistent with other structures in the historic district in terms of historic character, architectural style, construction material, height, setback or mass. The square foot cost of meeting the minimum building code would exceed the square foot market value of similarly used and improved structures in the historic district. Basically, the house is a plain one-story house that, if you look at it, you would have no idea that the house was built in 1898. It looks like a house that could have been built in the 50s or 60s. Basically, there's no historic significance to this property, to this structure. Staff recommends approval of the proposed demolition based on the following: The proposed demolition meets two of the four requirements for demolition as explained in the zoning code. The proposed demolition will help revitalization efforts in the immediate area, and the proposed demolition will eliminate white on the surrounding neighborhood.
Any questions of staff?
And it only takes, you said it meets two of the conditions of the four, you really, you only need one, right?
No, you have to have two.
You have to have two, okay. And just for my understanding, this is property that is owned by Hayner Cultural Center?
It's improved by him, Improved Troy Limited.
Okay.
Improved Troy Limited is wholly owned by friends of the Hayner.
Friends of the Hayner, okay. So I don't have any conflict.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Let the ladies first.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titerington?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhane?
Yes.
It's approved.
And next, we have a report on the final plat review for Nottingham Development, section 10. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. In 2015, planning commission and city council granted approval for the preliminary plan for Nottingham, sections nine and 10, and this is a final plat approval request for section 10. Section 10 kind of ends into this portion of the development, it makes a connection to Pickwattroy Road. It consists of 26 building lots over 11 and a half acres. The zoning is R3B, which requires a minimum of 12,000 square feet. All the lots range from over 12,000 square feet to just over half an acre. There will be some right-of-way dedication with this request, 2.181 acres. There will be three roads. The names are Haverhill Drive, White, Church Way, and Loxley Lane. Staff does recommend that planning commission provide a positive recommendation to city council for the proposed final plat, section 10, of the Nottingham subdivision, as the plan is in general accordance with the approved preliminary plan.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Titerington?
Got several questions. So was there a traffic study done on Pickwattroy Road and the impact that this, that section 10 will have?
We did not have an official traffic study done. We did have our traffic consultant, Richard Oaks, he went ahead and reviewed that and provided comments, which were met by the developer.
So all the conditions were met?
All the conditions were met.
Which, step me through, for the area north of the property, down to the southern boundary of the property, it is, a lane is added, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, as you're coming...
On the road.
Yes.
And so as you're coming south, there's a drop lane to turn right, and there's also a cutout for a future, not a cutout, but maybe a drawing, on the drawing, that will allow for a left-hand turn, should the property develop on the east side of Pickwattroy Road. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I assume that was Richard Oaks calling in to Alan to answer that question, but since Alan didn't take the phone call, I'll go ahead and answer that. Yes, there is, there is a drop lane coming in from that development, from the north. They've widened the road, it actually goes back into the county, back 20-some feet, which we did get approval, and notified the county for that approval, which is required for the, to have that extra lane.
And so the entrance, actually, that's an extension of Loxley, there will not be any kind of subdivision sign, no entrance sign?
No entrance sign. We did, we did contact Miami Valley Lighting about having some light there. I know that was a concern we had, and that will be discussed at the pre-construction meeting.
Yes, to make, yeah, make sure there's at least a street light at the intersection?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And sidewalks, will be the standard-sized concrete sidewalks along Pickwattroy Road?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Tim, on the plat of section 10, there's two lots at the very bottom down there that seem to be very, very small. Could you explain that for me, please?
Yes, those lots are essentially in the floodplain. What we've done in the past for Nottingham throughout, I believe, from section seven, probably through this section, is those are kind of deeded together, so they cannot be sold separately. They're not buildable lots, they just are lots. They are essentially going to be bought with, if you look at...
Lot directly north?
Lot 50 and 51, yeah, to the south. Those will remain there. Those are pretty consistent scene, like I said, through Nottingham 9, Nottingham 8, and Nottingham 7.
Why weren't they all drawn to be one lot? I'm just curious.
I believe it has issues to do with the floodplain, things of that nature. And so, yeah, the insurance would be out of it. The lot would still be inside, but where the house is, there would not be requirements, because that does meet the flood elevation requirements.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay. We're being asked to make a recommendation to council. Does the commission want to take any action?
Move to approve.
Move to make a recommendation to council?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titerington?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhane?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
It's approved.
The next matter is the final plat of Stonebridge Meadows, section 5, including the dedication right-of-way. Does staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. This is a request for Stonebridge Meadows, section 5. This is the fifth phase of seven phases. Essentially, it is encompassing 6.690 acres. There are 23 buildable lots in this development. This was a planned development. This follows right in line with the approved general plan of the planned development. It will have right-of-way dedication of 1.215 acres of street right-of-way, and the names of those roads will be Larksburg Drive and Heatherstone Drive. Parkland was dedicated with section 1, and staff is recommending approval, I guess, recommending that planning commission provide a positive recommendation to city council to accept the final plat for section 5. I will have you know that we are working on the escrow agreement with developer, which will be completed before it goes to city council.
Any questions of staff?
Tim, these are brought to you. We have in front of us also some restrictions, public access easements, et cetera. Page two or three, have you reviewed all that?
Yeah, we go through a review process with not only the planning department, but the engineering department as well.
Just want to make sure somebody read it. Okay. Any other questions of staff? Move for approval, motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
Second.
And the motion's support, please call the roll.
Mr. Titerington?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhane?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
It's approved.
Does staff have anything else to tell me for the commission today?
No.
Questions, have anything else they want to discuss?
Not to be...
Not all of them, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
B, is there support for the motion?
Yes.
That motion is set, no holes in favor, second by my standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you stand adjourned.